You can start.
I can start? This is your time.
That's official time.
Let's go ahead and hit this start.
Such a quiet life you live. So peaceful.
Okay. We're going to have a... or could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Hoag.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Chipman.
Here.
Von Breghorst.
Here.
Okay. Since this is not a regular meeting, we're not having the usual committee meeting or committee reports or pledges of allegiance or prayers, so we'll get right down to new business. And the first item on the agenda is a public hearing for the Bowler rezone request on East Fourth. And so we'll open the hearing and with the presenter come forward and identify themselves and give their address, please. Give their presentation.
Name and address.
Name is Cale Bowler.
Okay.
Address is 517 Oleander Road, Ontario, Oregon. So is that all you need from that part?
For that part.
All right. So what we want to do is right now, the piece of land behind Ridley's, between Ridley's and Fourth Street, is zoned C2, some C2, some C1, and some just B. We would like to change the entire zoning to a B1 zoning to build a... what we want to build is probably a mixture of townhouses and single-family homes on there. And so, I know this is probably at a later date, but to give you an idea of where we're going with it, we'd like to have all the zoning the same, so we could subdivide it and build some townhomes on it. I think that's... is that all I need? Think so?
It's up to you to present your case.
Okay. That's... I think that's clear enough unless someone has questions or something. So we're only asking for a zone change at this time.
Okay, are there any council questions?
Yes. So is the... I'm looking at the map that was included in our package. Is this all one parcel?
It is.
Okay. And the... can you talk about access?
Yes, I can. So right now, the property has access off the Ridley's property in the... let me think a little bit, the southwest corner. And so it'll be this a 40 or 50-foot wide easement. So we'd like to put easement from that corner into the property and also then have an entrance off of Fourth Street in two locations on Fourth Street. So it'll be one street to the center of the, more or less, the center of the property, or a divided street, I must say, is what we kind of have drawn up, is the divided street with the townhouses facing it and some facing Fourth Street. But then the... so you enter and exit Fourth Street, far ends, obviously, east and north and south, and then you also have the entrance to Ridley's.
Okay. So the road would split the property east and west, is that...
There would be road east and west, all the way across it, on the southern end, and then there would be a road, that would be a split, divided road with kind of like a landscaping area between the two roads that would run north and south and through the middle of it.
Oh, okay. Kind of make four squares out of it.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then you say that there would be an entrance for two houses off of East Fourth?
No, there would only be an entrance, there would only be an entrance for the property on Fourth, on both the north end and the south end of the property.
Any other questions?
I guess I want to... so through the Ridley's property, the access there, is it your understanding there's a right-of-way there that you can like build a road through the edge of their parking lot?
That's correct. And if you look at the, if you want to drive back there, if you look on the southwest corner of the Ridley's parking lot, there actually is a dip in their curbing exactly where it would go through. And so, and so if you look at the, and I have on, it didn't ring with me, but I have an access or an easement from Ridley's on this property stating it lists all the things that you can put on there. And what we were putting, either condos, townhouses, apartment buildings, it lists about everything you can possibly imagine that could possibly go there as okay to access across their, have access across their, or an easement across their parking lot, as long as we're willing to maintain it, help them maintain it. So...
Okay. So that road wouldn't be a city street, it would be a private drive, is that correct?
That's correct.
And at the other end, does it come out about where the one exit from Ridley's is now, is that...
Yes, it does. It does. It's slightly off because they have the flower beds and, or the landscaping stuff there. You turn the southern, the southern entrance into the Ridley's or by the hardware store. If you look, it's slightly off, but then it goes back along their fence and comes back to the north slightly, about 50 feet, 25, 50 feet from that fence is the intention in the curbing for the entrance into that property.
Okay.
So our thought was, we have not done a true traffic study on it yet, but our thought was that more than likely, we know that there's ballgames, we know there's all that stuff goes on, on Fourth Street, and I know that there's a lot of people, or some people express that as a concern. I think there's two different ways to handle that somewhat. We could either push the property line, or we could build parking along Fourth Street that would help with that possibly, if we need to. The other thing is, we'd be willing to do that. And the other thing is, we would be, we think that because of the way we're designing it, that anyone that's probably going to work or catching 95 or anything like that is probably going to toss the Ridley's parking lot anyway. So that's what my engineering company thinks. They think that the, that there will be obviously more traffic on Fourth Street, probably, but obviously it's not as much as if you just put the whole thing there and loaded it off of Fourth Street completely.
Okay. And so, so the request is for a rezone, so as it stands, without a variance or a conditional use permit, you could put a single-family residence there or a duplex, or isn't that about, as far as residential, about...
I think, I think the way it is right now, you could possibly put six, six single-family homes along Fourth Street, and you could put commercial between that and the, there's about 100-foot or something like that, that's zoned B1 along Fourth Street now. So you could enter it, you could put six entrances off of Fourth Street, if I'm not mistaken, now.
Okay. And if we put the whole thing into B1, what's your understanding, what you could do without any other review by...
My understanding is if we did the whole thing as B1 now, we could go in there and subdivide it and put it into, I think it's 72 or 7400 square foot lots, so you could probably get about 30 homes in there if you wanted to do it. I, that is not our intent or our goal, but you could, according to what it is now, as B1, I believe you could do, Mike can maybe correct me on this, but I think that's something like that.
Yeah, I would assume it'd be right around that maybe. Depends on roads and everything, but it's right around that.
Okay. So are we, would we buy, by approving the zoning, the approving a situation like that, or does the subdivision or the multiple houses or...
So right now, we only have one, one building permit, I believe, for the whole thing, but you would have to go through the subdivision process no matter what. If you rezone it to B1, you'd still have to go through the full subdivision process.
Okay. So I, because I just wanted to understand for sure what we're approving tonight, so right, right now, they could put one house and have a really big yard.
Right, without going through the subdivision process.
Okay. All right? All right, thank you.
Anything else?
So you mentioned possibly you did 34 homes at this point, but that's really not your plan, right?
It's not my plan, no.
Your plan is the townhouse.
Our plan was the townhouses, and our plan was to make some, some very, very nice townhouses and not cram them in there, like make it solid townhouses, but give it a nice landscaping area and plant trees back along Fourth Street and make it look really nice. That was our goal, to make a very, very, I'm going to use the term for maybe Weezer, for a higher-end townhome project. Because we think that, we think that it's an excellent location for people who want to walk to the grocery store, maybe older people. It's not, we're not looking at a 55 and older type of scenario, but we think that would probably be our audience, maybe. And we're looking at someone that could drive, could walk to the grocery store, walk to the pharmacy, and it would be within a block of the hospital or so of that, whatever it is there.
If I may, the actual what goes in there will be addressed during the subdivision process. Depending on what they draw up and engineer it as, it would be addressed at that time.
And after, traffic study is also...
If you still wish, yeah, if you require that.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. At this time, or is there anyone who would like to come up and speak in favor of this proposal?
Can I speak if I don't live in town?
Sure.
Yes, you can, you just still have to state your name and address.
Okay. I'm Rod Panicky. My address. Weezer River, or County Route 70, 1217 County Route 70. I'm sorry. Only lived here all my life, you go down to the oak tree and turn right, that's how it is. Well, you know, I'm obviously in favor of it because under real estate, you have to sell the property, so I get a commission out of it, so it's probably not a fair, that's probably not a fair reason to be up here, but I think it's a good project for the town. I really do. You got a piece of ground back there, it's sitting back there behind something, Ridley's and By Mart and that, does not bring use for anything, and why not put something in there that would be beneficial to the town? And I think this would be beneficial to the town, in my personal opinion. So I'm in favor of it, along with what is going to be required, that you'll require them to do in the process of putting it together. So the first step is to get the zone changed, and they can go from there to submit the plans and drawings and stuff to you for your final approval, is what they want to do, and that's what to give you a complete picture, but you've got to start with the zone first to get it to what they need it to be. So I'm in favor of it, so... Any questions? Don't ask me my address again, because I don't...
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
So I'm Jordan Blanchard, I'm at 1525 Loper Lane in Weezer. I just want to speak in favor, I think it'll be a good project, I think there's some need for housing in our area, and I'm aware of this through my practice, people looking for something nice like that. And I think it'd be a real asset to the community, it's a great spot, like has been mentioned. Doesn't have to be elderly people, but I see that as a real benefit there, where you could walk to the pharmacy, grocery store, and watch a game in the park. And I think some of the concerns as far as traffic on that road, we could actually potentially approve with additional access, you know, to the park in that area, so you don't have to come down Fourth Street in and out of that area, so... And, you know, this, this comes later, but I just want to reiterate too, that our plan isn't to just pack in kind of low-quality housing there, we really want to make something nice that's a real asset to our community, because we live here and we want to see something nice going.
Any questions? Thank you. Are there, is there anyone else in favor? Okay. Are there any parties who would like to speak on a neutral basis on this project? Going once? Going twice? Okay. Are there, is there anyone who would like to speak against this project?
Timberlong 1240 East Fourth Street. This property would back up against my parents' property, which is on the south side, their pasture and our backyards. I'm all for housing, I think that's great, but I think if it's B1 residential, doesn't that mean B residential with animals? Is B1 residential with animals? So that to me says, if it's animals, are we going to have goats and pigs and chickens, which is fine? But then I don't think townhouses and, but I think it should be maybe residential, either an A, which is low residential, low-density residential, or an AL, which is a single-family residential with a half an acre to up to five acres. That would make four or five, maybe even six really nice homes. And so, that's just my thoughts, but yeah. I think traffic is, definitely needs to be addressed. So, that's it.
So ma'am, just one question, so is your opposition to B1 residential because you can also have animals?
No, I just think that, because my house is B1 residential, and that's what is all the way along the front side of the property, on the east side of that property, is all B1 residential. But it's called B1 residential with animals, so houses could be built there and it can have farm animals, which is fine, I love my cows, but I just, I don't think B1 is the right format that needs to be assigned to it. I think it needs to either be an B, it needs to be an A or an AL. So...
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would express an opinion against this?
Kelly Hahn, 2240 Valley Drive, Weezer.
Okay.
And I just don't know if I'm against it as much as I really would like the council to consider the traffic on that Fourth Street, because we have two parks right there, the one on the corner, and then where little kids play there by the tennis courts. I have been on that road several times, not just for games, but for like run-walks, the volleyball courts there. That, you cannot find a parking space along there. And it's just busy a lot of the time. And I think, yeah, you can put parking there, but you've got little kids running back and forth on that road, and kids might top priority. And so to think that it would endanger any child, that really bothers me. So that is my consideration, and I would ask the council to please consider a traffic study that would show how we can protect our children in that area, because it is a high traffic area for children, so...
Thank you. Any questions? Is there anyone else who'd like to express in that first thought on that? Again, going once? Going twice? Would you like to rebut those?
I think we understand that there is the park there. That is partly the appeal of it, right? To make something really nice by the park is the appeal. I also understand the, the part of worrying about traffic and all that, even though I think the traffic will be eased because of the Ridley's scenario. It is not our intent to have any animals, so just don't have to worry about us putting cows in there, anything like that, I don't think, along with, with our single-family homes or townhomes, I don't think we have to worry about the cow situation or horses or animals of any kind. Like I said, and like Jordan said, our intent is to make something nice that is really nice for the city of Weezer. That is our goal.
And I think that the question brought up was that, you know, things do happen, and that if it's zoned something and the property transfers, someone else can do something else. And so that is, that's probably a concern.
Can I comment on that?
Yes.
Just for a comment, though, even if it is changed to that, to build more than one house, you'd still have to go through the subdivision process, was we're giving a lot of, I don't want to say control, but a lot of control over what would happen and what would go in there, unless it's just one house, and then you'd have a house with farm animals, but you definitely have, the traffic study and everything like that would be through the subdivision process.
And you could probably limit the amount of access from Fourth Street.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know about that, but I'm just saying, right now with the rezone, you still would address everything besides the rezoning of the property in the subdivision process.
So right now, basically, to do a rezone, you're rezoning and okaying one house, because that's all that can go there at this time. Everything else could be addressed.
I don't even know, do they have, sorry to interrupt, do they even have a building permit? I don't believe there is. I believe Ridley's and Dry Foods used, or By Mart used the only two building permits, so it'd have to be subdivided even to put one house on it, I believe.
Any questions? Okay. We will close the public hearing then and go on to number two, which is the Bowler rezone request on East Fourth. Is there any discussion?
So the request at this time is to rezone to B1, that's at least the request. And that was the request that went in front of P and Z at their hearing?
And I think it's important that we mention that P and Z approved this, after their hearing, approved this request.
It was their recommendation to us.
Yeah, their recommendation that we approved it, yeah.
But with the condition of a traffic study.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, but I think so, but then it sounded like Mike said that that would be addressed in a subdivision process.
In a subdivision plan. You can, you can stipulate it, it doesn't have to be done, but you can stipulate it in that process, right?
So the, yeah, to me, the toughest thing in this request is getting your head around what we're actually approving.
Right.
Because although the applicant has told us what they intend to do, they really don't even have to. This request is for, for a zone change, so the decision is, is this piece of property better zoned with three different zones in the same lot? Or is it better zoned B residential? And if we, if we decide that, yeah, it should be B residential if we prove it, then whatever you can do in B residential, you can do. And in this case, as Mike said, you know, there probably, or there's not even a building permit, so you can't even pitch a tent there and leave it. So, so, or at least for me, the hardest part is, is what are we approving? And what we're saying by, by approving this is, we think it's better off as a residential area than a, a commercial area. And, you know, I agree with, with people who have concerns about traffic and all that in a certain way, you know, Fourth Street is not exactly a freeway. And so, but, but I think that that all needs to be addressed when they come to us for a proposal for, to subdivide it, and, and we can, we can do all of that. I frankly think this is a, is a good idea for it to be B residential. It conforms to, to what adjacent properties are, to the south are, are zoned. It's a, it's a good buffer between the commercial zone and the, and the park on the other side of the street. So, you know, I think, I just think it makes sense.
Can I ask for clarification on something that threw me off? Is B1, does that mean that it allows animals, or is this a special distinction, B1 with animals?
B1 is B1 with animals.
B1, okay. And so then what's the difference between B and B1? Just so that we can clarify the difference between the two.
Dave, do you know that I'll stop you there?
Do you know, I don't. I think just the biggest difference that I know of is just with animals.
Do you think you need to come forward?
Yeah. I think, hey, Louis, say the reason, I think the biggest difference is just the B1 is with animals, and the B is without, I mean, basically everything else is the same, once you can put on them as far as your residential.
Does it make a difference in conditional uses?
Yeah.
Yes.
So Dave...
That's just, that's one of the thing, in a B zone, townhouses aren't allowed at all.
Yeah, so the distinction is, is B residential is medium-density, single-family only. B1 residential district is medium-density, single-family and agricultural, so you could have, you could do the townhomes and the...
So Dave, just to...
The multifamily.
Yeah, just to clarify, it's not like you could put a feedlot there and have 300 head of cows.
No, in our B1, we have limits as to, the land size just designates how, what animals and how many can be on it, even in the B1 with animals.
Right.
It's all based, it's all still based on land size, that's what the capacity for animals is.
And I'm just reading the description, it says like three animal units per acre?
Right.
So, and I can't remember how many...
Six acres.
So you could have, you could have 18, basically head of livestock there.
Yeah, totally get subdivided.
Right.
Any other questions?
No, I just, I, thank you. I just wanted to clarify the difference between B and B1, so that I don't need the difference, because I wasn't remembering.
So if townhouses is the only thing that we could zone it?
The only way to have multifamily dwellings is B1.
Yeah. And with the conditional use?
Yep.
Okay.
So as of right now, I think they're requesting the rezone, so they can have the option to do the multifamily and multiple dwellings, but until they go through the subdivision process with the conditional uses, they wouldn't be able to do anything.
Does that help?
Thank you.
Well, I think it makes sense to clean it up and have it all under one zoning. I think that was, the feeling that came from the P and Z hearing was that they felt like it should be cleaned up and all under one, one zoning, and their recommendation was B1.
I feel like it's a theme that P and Z and even the Design Review Committee is, is working towards, is looking at our zoning across the city as we try to work in our comp plan and understand our historic district that we're trying to apply for and all these things, and just, we are such a hodgepodge of zonings all over the place, and, which is natural for small towns that are growing and developing, so I, I see the value in trying to clean it up, and, you know, but...
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and rezone this to B1 as requested.
Second? Okay, you can move to second, any discussion? Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chipman.
Yes.
Hoag.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Hahn.
Yes.
Von Breghorst. Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Moving on, public hearing for conditional use permit for county, for the county. And so we'll open up this hearing. Would the presenter come forward and state the case?
Mayor City Council, thank you for your time. We're asking for...
State your name.
Oh, Luden Hands, 1319...
Oh, London Hands, 1319 West First Street. So we are asking for a conditional use permit for 343 East Main to house our prosecutor's office. Uh, we purchased, it was at one point a chiropractor's office and I think a residence again in between. And we purchased that just because the courthouse is full. Uh, we are remodeling the annex at this time for the sheriff's office and trying to get the assessor and DMV all in one place. But even when that's done, we're still busting at the seams. So we did purchase this with the idea of putting the prosecutor's office there. So I would, I would guess, uh, cause we'll have a new prosecutor, so I can't tell you exactly. But I'm thinking four to five employees at the most. Of course, there will be, um, supposed city and county, uh, police officers that will stop in, of course, to go over cases. And also victims will, will come to the, to the office as well to talk to the prosecutor. So I don't see it as, as, as a huge traffic burden to the area. Um, I think most of the parking for the employees will be off the alley in the back. We're going to clean that, if approved, and clean that area out. There's some trees that have overgrown. And we have a sewer line to fix back there first and then we'll probably have parking. So I think all employees will park in the back and then people visiting, of course, would park on the street. So that's what we're, we're asking for.
Any questions?
Yeah, so what was the, uh, I guess my question, simply my question is, is why, why was this a choice to have a place to put the prosecutor?
It was close enough where it's walking distance, you know, in the past, we've never, we're actually supposed to provide a place for the prosecutor, but historically they've always had their own office. And so we've never had to in, in the last, I don't know, decades, actually provide an office for the prosecutor. So we're supposed to, we just never have had to. So now that, when situation changed and election went the way it did, we, we have to provide a space for them. And there is no space in the courthouse to do this. So we went looking somewhere close. We lived a couple of other properties as well. And this is the one that seemed to be the closest. The secretaries would like to be within walking distance of the courthouse so they can bring stuff over and the sheriff's office. And this was, of course, just a block and a half away. So that was the main appeal for it. And it, it had been at one point, I don't know if you consider that a commercial property, but there'd been a chiropractor's office there. So we thought, you know, there's probably a good chance of using it in a similar fashion.
Uh, you mentioned the employee parking in the alley behind it. Is there adequate room for three to four cars?
Yeah, it'd be, I think they're gonna have to, they'd have to stack probably on the one side a little bit. I think you could probably get three in there. Okay. You might have to be a little creative. It is pretty long in the back. So you could probably, you know, have some spots where you could back around. But it could be, it could be a little challenging in the back. It's, it's a, it's a long, narrow lot. So it, it's not a ton of space, but I think that's the best place for the employees to park would be in the back. Unless they decided that's where they want. There may be a time when they have to bring witnesses in that way just for privacy. So they may have witnesses parked back there too, and they may park in the front on that day. If they know witnesses coming in, just so that there's some privacy to not see them walking to the prosecutor's office.
So is, is it pretty open in the back? So.
Yeah, there's some trees that have overgrown that we're gonna have trimmed up. Like I said, we got, we have a sewer line problem. We had it scoped and so the sewer line, of course, goes to the alley. So we're gonna have that dug up in a, in a place and to fix, not the entire thing, like we maybe thought at one point, but we're gonna have to have it. But yeah, there's, there's quite a bit of space behind there. I mean, it's not, there's no grass right now. It's, it's gravel, dirt kind of mix. So we're gonna have to do a little improvement back there probably as well.
Okay. And so, and there's residential properties on either side of it that have been being used for residences, as you understand?
I believe so, yeah. There was actually a trailer parked from one of the residences that was in the, in the parking that's since been moved, um, that they were just, they were just using it to park a trailer back there.
Okay. And so there's no, I guess the, so the cars parked in the back will likely be, uh, visible to, to the neighbors on, on each side?
There are fences and I think we're going to probably improve, I think the old fence on the, if I remember right, it's been a while since I walked it, but the, the fence on the west side probably will, we maybe have to, to put a, uh, uh, either adjust it or help it or fix it or just put our own fence up. Uh, but there's fences along both properties on, behind the house, if I remember correctly, when I, when I walked around it.
So we'll get, the alley will get increased traffic and you understand that the city does not maintain alleyways?
My garage is off of an alley, yes, for my home. Yeah, I understand that, yes. Yeah, there'd be a little bit. I, again, I don't, I don't know. I think we'll have, we'll have the prosecutor, one deputy, and maybe two people working in the offices, my guess at this point, but I can't tell you for sure, cause he hasn't taken office yet. But my guess will be four employees. So there may be the three parked in the back and one parks on the street. Or I don't know how they'll work that out.
And then I was also looking in our zoning law, there's a section about parking. Have you, are you familiar with that?
I am, because of church, yes.
So, um, cause I was not until tonight when I was looking at it, just before I came here. So you have to have so many parking spots along the street or in the front per, um, per square foot of the building? Is that right?
I believe so. And I don't know, I don't think, is diagonal parking allowed on that street, Mike? Yeah, cause really.
It's Highway 95. Main is state controlled road.
Oh, okay, okay. Cause I know like the community church at one point used to park diagonally. I don't know if they're allowed to do that anymore. So, yeah, you could pick up another spot if it was a diagonal parking was allowed, but I don't believe it's allowed. You know, we're not, there won't be, we're gonna fix, you know, the house has been, um, sitting empty for quite a while. So there's not really any, long, anything. I'm probably just gonna put gravel in there. Um, there's not really much we can do for, you know, because of the sidewalk, you know, so we can't really utilize the front of the building for parking just because the sidewalk's there.
Okay, so.
On a diagonal, it has to be just a parallel park. So you probably fit in one, maybe two cars in front of the property, be my guess. It's not, it's not big.
It has pull-in, and it has pull-in parking right now.
Does it?
Yeah. So I believe there's a hand, three, and then a handicap, and it's already labeled handicap with the curves in the front.
Okay.
So I believe out front, there is three on the south side of the sidewalk.
Okay, cool. We, we utilize that. Obviously, we, I think.
I was just reading that and it said something about, um, uh, one parking spot for every 300 square feet of building in the, buildings 1900 square feet.
I don't think it's 1900 usable. It's counting a basement that I would tell you, you would not want to have an office in. You might use it for storage.
Okay, so it's unfinished.
It's, yeah, it's pretty rough. I mean, it's, you can walk, I can walk down there, but I have to walk like this. And then I don't think you'd want to have a desk down in the basement.
Okay.
It's, it's, for a basement, it's pretty, you know, it's decent. I, I'd say it'd be record storage. So it's just the one floor that we'd be using for anything. And then there's, we haven't figured out yet. There's a window above that either is a void space in the back. There are stairs that go up there that you can't use, that you wouldn't want to climb up right now. So I don't know if there's a space above that you can actually utilize, or it's just a window for light. I don't know. None of us dared to climb the, the stairs, so.
So it's a stairway to nowhere right now?
Right now. And so, yeah, I don't know if that, the, the upper part would ever be utilized. But we're just finally utilizing the, the first floor. The basement would be storage of records. It's dry enough down there to keep stuff. It doesn't appear to have flooded or floods. So we would, we would just store records in the basement.
Okay, so I, because I was just reading off the, in the, in the information there from the tax assessment, it just said 1900 square foot.
Yeah.
And so, um, I'm truthfully not sure if that includes the basement.
Well, it has to, cause above right now, it's a, you walk into a kind of what I would say would become a conference room. Cause they changed it since it was a commercial property. They put a window where the front door used to be, which will put the front door back there. You walk into the kitchen and then there's this little space, I don't know if it was a bedroom. There's two little, we'd use them as offices. You qualify them bedrooms and a bathroom and that's it on the, on the one floor. And they're not, they're not big rooms.
So is it the basement, is it a?
It's a concrete floor and it's concrete around. I mean, it's a, it's a brick foundation, but there's a concrete floor in there. So it's, I think for a basement that is not, you know, carpeted or that you'd want to be in, it's, it's pretty nice. That's why we thought we would keep records down there, cause it appears to be dry. But yeah, it would not be a spot.
But it's a, like a full basement, it's.
Oh, yeah. It's all underneath it.
So if, if the 1900 square feet that shows on the tax record includes the basement, the actual main floor is about half that?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's not huge.
Okay. Okay, and there, so that one, I just don't, I'm not familiar enough with our ordinance to say whether, or whether that counts or not.
The listing that they sent us says 961 is considered finished above grade.
Yeah, yeah, that's the part we can utilize for the office.
And so I think below it is not considered finished according to the.
Cause if we haven't counted all 1900, you're not gonna be able to comply with.
We got a lot of parking spots.
Cause what's that, six?
Yeah.
Miniature parking garage.
Six and a half, yeah.
Would be close. Yeah, with parking up front and the back, it'd be close.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I was just reading in the, Ms. Mayor, I was just reading in the minutes from the P and C that, um, Tony Amundson, um, believed that the conditional use permit that was issued to the previous business was, it was not really, um, a permitted use. And I just wondered what, um, what bearing that had on this. Is this, did the staff address that in the, in these minutes? I can't remember.
Nate Marvin is the one who did this in, in order to visit a conference, that's why I'm here. But Nate said that he thought that there was, city zoning didn't actually allow for a law office, is what's, what's, I believe.
It's not specifically mentioned.
It's not specifically mentioned as an allow.
But I think, I believe that the city's attorney believes that we could pass this because it fits the criteria of the businesses of the, it's a like business to the ones that are mentioned. So I think he, am I, am I right, Natasha?
Yeah. So if you, if you read under the uses permitted, it says a professional office of a surgeon, physician, dentist, lawyer, clergyman, or other professional person using his residence for the consultation, emergency treatment, or performance of religious rights only and not for the general practice of a profession. So that's basically stating that anything listed above can go there, can be there as long as the person is residing there. So that would say that it would not qualify. But then if you jump down to the conditional uses, it states every single one of those as permitted use there with the conditional use, except for, um, a lawyer. So is that an oversight? Is that, is, I mean, what were they thinking at the time? Cause everything else listed there is permitted with the conditional use. Or do you jump down and say that it, in other uses deemed similar by the city to the uses above may be considered under conditional use application? So that's just what our code says.
It's talking about professionals, so I would.
Exactly.
I'd have to think that, that lawyers are somewhat professional.
Hope so.
Be careful.
I guess that ordinance has been around for a minute. If you had to, doctor could have to live in the house, right?
Yep.
So are you saying that our city attorney addressed this particular issue and said that it was allowable under a conditional use permit?
Um, he was asked about it and, yeah, his answer was that he thought that it fit with the.
Like services.
Yeah.
Okay, even though planning and zoning denied it from the city attorney, said it was okay.
And specifically, we were at the hearing and their answer was it's not specifically mentioned, um, for variance. But their attorney believes that if we want to pass it, that we would, that we would be okay in doing so, cause it is a like.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Are, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this item? Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak neutrally, has a neutral comment about this? Again, going once, one twice. Okay, are there any people, is there anyone who would like to speak against this? Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
Joseph Vaughn, 377 East Main Street. My name is Joseph Vaughn. Uh, my wife, Raina, and I are the primary residents two doors to the east of this property at 377 East Main Street. Uh, that is historically known as the Bernard Haas House. Our Queen Anne Victorian home is not too dissimilar from this home in question. We are strongly opposed to the, the use of these historic homes as office spaces. Our rationale for this opposition, I'll list in the following categories of concern. Historic homes and mixed use challenges. This home was built in 1900 and is a small Victorian, not unlike the Bernard Haas House, our home. I brought with me a picture of this home taken not long after they were built, if anyone's interested. Um, and the two homes are some of the only ones on that block in that same timeframe. Uh, my wife and I enjoy and volunteer our time preserving and maintain, making sure the historic homes that make Weezer unique remain within reason unaltered. Let me draw your attention then to the City of Weezer Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Two, Section Special Areas and Sites. And on page 24 of the plan, it describes these homes as historical. And it, and it indicates a need for these assets within the community to be identified, inventoried, to ensure that they are given appropriate considerations with respect to building and development. Having a historic home like this doesn't come without its challenges. We've experienced several instances of trespassing. Of those instances, several included people walking right in the front or side entrance of our home, thinking that we were running a professional business. In some instances, the public is hesitant to take their redirection and lingers for a duration before finally vacating our home. Uh, in response, we placed no trespassing signs across our property, which ultimately affects the historic appeal. Switching these historic homes to be utilized in a mixed way clearly creates public confusion. I'll also cite and mention that this specific property and home in question was previously owned by the Strong's family. It was then allowed a conditional use permit and utilized as a chiropractic office for several years. I'll cite from Title 10 of the Weezer Zoning Regulations, Chapter Seven, A Residence District Low Density Single Family. This section defines the permitted uses for this zone, which this application is for as follows. A professional office of a surgeon, physician, dentist, lawyer, clergyman, or other professional person using his residence for the consultation, emergency treatment, or performance of related rights only, and not for the general practice of the profession. Based on this, it appears to not be permitted. I'll note that it is likely why the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that this application was denied. At that time of that previous conditional use, several key historical features of the home were then removed, replaced in the sake of business modernization, even though the physician in question utilized it as his residence. External doors and stained glass or leaded windows were removed, likely to improve the efficiency. And from our knowledge to this day, those important architectural features remain missing or lost. Business use cases can vastly vary and can adversely affect the historic home itself, but others in the surrounding community as well. One to visit the site of these properties, once, one would quickly learn of the parking mess that this kind of mixed use encouraged in the past. The rear of the residence is primarily gravel, which is now being utilized as overflow for the neighboring cottage rental homes. Alternatives. Finally, I would like to thank everyone for their time and considerations of our concerns for utilizing these historic homes and specifically 343 East Main as conditional use for office space. I would like to encourage and urge Washington County to seek existing properties and buildings already within the business districts of downtown Weezer. Please see Title 10 of the Weezer Zoning Regulations, Chapter 10, Commercial Districts, and specifically the zoning areas titled C, C1, C2, C3. C2 is titled Central Business District. And amongst its uses, used permits, permitted is the definition of professional offices, which would appear to be the allowed proper use for this type of case. This would also align with the city's existing comprehensive plan and align with Appendix A Future Land Use Map, which defines and identifies this downtown area as being utilized for commercial. Adhering to this plan, we would, we will help revitalize those areas of our community, help to set a precedence for the future, and hopefully alleviate any confusions for the public on which locations are residential versus commercial. And I will note on the walking distance, I walk it every morning and, um, from the courthouse to downtown, the C districts is only a few blocks. So it's well within walking if the county wanted to take one of those buildings.
Any questions?
So how long you own your homes?
Own, uh, since 2021, December 13th, it was going to be officially closed on the Haas House.
Okay, and what, so what, so it was a chiropractor's office and then turned back into a residence? And what was it when, when you purchased your property, you remember?
It was a residence. That's correct.
Mayor, I think his house has always been a residence. I don't think his.
Mine has always been a residence.
Mine has always been a residence.
Yeah, absolutely. I was just, I was just, just to be clear, I'm talking about the subject property. It was, what the state it was in when I moved in.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Housed some of our teachers, actually, through our TFA program. Case study, oh, no, Teach for America was housing some of our teachers there.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Are there any other, anyone else who would like to speak against this proposal? Would the president like to come up and-
Yeah, absolutely. So in due fashion, the historical concerns, the county, Washington County just received an award this past year for our innovation on the courthouse. I would say if you want to keep this as historical, you're going to want the county on it. It's not on the historical registry as far as I know, so if it doesn't go conditional use, my guess is we'll just resell it as a residence, and someone could knock the thing down if they really desire to. So your elected officials, I mean, the people that, like you, like us in the county, if you're worried about it being historical and they try to change it, go to one of these meetings and you make a fuss, and as you guys know, things change. So I would say that it's in pretty good hands if the county has it, if you want it to remain as historical. Is it a residence? It's, I tell you, you could walk into it right now, and we can take you on a tour if you'd like to. It's not laid out much like a residence anymore. That was before we ever purchased it, of course. It was used as a chiropractor office, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's laid out as, it's for a business at this moment in time. So I would say that the county will take, it'll be in good hands when it comes to the historical part of it, if it's in the county's hands. And I ask for forgiveness, Mayor and Commissioner, but I have a child I take to a football game here soon, so I'm going to have to leave him real quick, and I apologize for that. I'm the only commissioner in town, so.
So just two real quick questions. Do you have a plan B if this doesn't happen? And I know you can't really go out and get an architect and do anything with this building until you find out whether we're going to care or not, but it'd be interesting to see if you have some kind of an architectural plan or what it would be.
Yeah, I have plans to make some improvements, again, the sewer line. There's no HVAC in it right now, so that's something that we're going to have to look at doing as well. That's a $20,000 or something like that is the bid we have so far, but we haven't moved on any of that, of course, until we get through this process. So we looked at some properties downtown. Obviously, I don't want to tell you which properties we looked at. We couldn't buy anything downtown. There's an old bank that wouldn't, they wouldn't sell to us that we would like to. So another property, one of the elected officials from Washington County owns, so we couldn't do that. Comes a little further away. So we did look at some other properties that just none of them worked. This is the only one that we had traction on.
Any other questions? Then we'll close the hearing. Okay, and move on to number four, county conditional use permits.
Sorry, thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I've got, I've got more comments. I guess it, to me, the first thing to consider is, this property is zoned residential. And although we may be within our rights to approve a conditional use for this applicant, I think it all comes down to what, what we think the people who approved our ordinance in the first place meant when they said that a professional surgeon, physician, dentist, blah, 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 using his residence for consultation, emergency treatment, or performance of religious rights only. Then it goes on to say, you can also do these other things. So does that mean the part about it has to be the residence isn't a part of that? And, you know, I guess it just comes down to what our opinion is of that, and frankly, my opinion is, is that I think that our ordinance said this is supposed to be somebody's house, and if you're a doctor or a dentist or something and want to have an office in your home, then that's okay. And then it went on to expand that, you know, if you, you know, are doing it in your home, that you can do, have these other things as well. So, so I just don't think this is, this use is what the intention is for this, for this zone. If we, if we allow this, although something similar may have been in there previously, that expired with change of ownership. And, and I, you know, I get that, you know, I have no doubt that the county would take care of the property as best they could. I have no doubt that they would do everything in their power to blend in to be, and to be a good neighbor. But frankly, I agree with Mr. Vaughn. I don't think that it was the intention of this, of this zone to allow commercial businesses in there. It was basically to allow somebody to have a mom and pop shop of some kind in the place where they lived. And so I guess I'm, in short, although there's nothing wrong with the county and their intentions, I just don't think that this is a good precedence for us to set. And I think it's, zoned residential for a reason, is to be someone's residence, which is, and Mr. Vaughn, who testified when he bought his house, that, you know, that's how it was. It was a residence, although, you know, I've taken some remodeling to get it back to a residence. That was the deal. You know, I've said before, when you buy a piece of property in the city, you make a deal with the city, that you will abide by the rules of the zoning, and the city says, we'll make everybody else do the same. And I think to let it go back to be a commercial use is, is changing the game. And it, you know, although not intent, not the intention of the applicant could actually negatively impact the value of the, of the property just because there's a business in it. So, so I guess that's my, I probably talked way too long, but I guess that's my two cents. I just don't think that this is the proper use for that property.
I would agree. I feel like the people who are around have property rights and should be withhold, you know, upholding what should be there for a zoning to help protect them, and I have no doubt that the county would try to, you know, make it as historically pleasing as they possibly could, but I don't want to go against our own planning and zoning. I think they've looked at it. I think they've said no third reason, and that's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, I think, I think the county would, would have the right intent, obviously, and they would try to do their best. I think probably my biggest concern, consistency, we're trying to clean up our planning and zoning, as we just established in the previous amendment. We're trying to clean it up. This does no favors for us in doing that. But, but then I have safety concerns about turning the back lawn into additional parking. We don't maintain our alleyways. We don't, what does that do to all of those neighbors on that same block? Now you have business traffic that is going up and down the service alley beyond the normal, what we get. I just have concerns and reservations. I don't like it. And I think the nature of a chiropractic office is very different from a prosecuting attorney's office. I just think the nature of how much business you get there and how many people are there is very different for what the county would end up using it for from what the previous variance was, you know, chiropractors, chiropractor, maybe secretary, I mean, your patients. And they're in and out in 15 minutes or 45, depending on your issue. Yeah. So I agree with disagree.
Any questions or comments?
And I also am a strong believer in supporting our Planning and Zoning Commission, and they thoroughly researched this, and their finding was that you deny this, and I, until proven differently, I think I would vote to back them up.
The only thing that I would like to see is, down the road, we may need to re, to take a look at this conditional use, the way it's written, and see if there was a reason that it was written this way, that, that obviously legal office was not mentioned, and, or was that an oversight? But at this time, that's not really the question. The question is whether we grant this conditional use. And I'm in favor of not, not giving them their conditional use for that.
Since everyone has chimed in, should we go ahead and, would someone be willing to make a motion?
Mayor, here I move to, to deny the, the, let's see, the request for a conditional use permit.
I'll second the motion.
He's been moved and technically, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Blackwell.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Vaughn Redhorse?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is the next item on the agenda a midpoint at this point?
No, no, absolutely not.
It's a different item?
Yeah, yeah.
For the extension of the courthouse.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a, okay.
For the, for the MBR.
So the next item is the county request for rebuilding permit fees.
So the county right now is expanding their building and adding on to their annex building, and so they have a current building permit with the city in the amount of $7,150. It has been the common practice of the city council to waive county building permit fees. So that is the request from the county is to waive the $7,150 building permit fees.
And it's not only between the county and the city. We try and waive fees for all technical businesses, such as we're simply-
Working together.
Working together and passing public funds back and forth.
I motion that we accept the, and waive the building permit fees for the county.
I second.
And do I need to be specific, in the amount of $7,150?
I second that motion.
Removed and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Vaughn Redhorse?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, with your being-
I motion Weezer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, and happy birthday.
Thank you.